Good evening, everybody. For your information, we're live streaming again tonight. So call me if you're ordered. Move by Councilor Yev, seconded by Councilor Blummer. Resolve the regular meeting commenced at the hour of 7:00 P.M. On favor? Vote, none, carry. Item number two addition and deletion to the agenda. There is none. Item number three, disclosure of pecuniary interests. Member of council, Ed Dunle, council meeting date, September 12th, 2018, open session. I declare a pecuniary interest on agenda item number 0902 of the agenda for the above noted meeting for the following reason. Information stated on related memo may be used in a pending litigation matter.
Disclosure of pecuniary interests. Member of council, Ed Dunle, council meeting date, September 12th, 2018, closed session. I declare a pecuniary interest on agenda item number 1603 of the agenda for the above noted meeting for the following reason. I was the applicant in this application.
Thank you. Item number four, approval of agenda. Move by Councilor Dunle, seconded by Councilor Yev. Resolve that the agenda be approved circulated. On favor? Vote, none, carry. Item number five, delegations. 501, a presentation from Grant Thornton Auditor regarding 2017 draft financial statement.
So through the chair, we're going to try and dial in. And they're waiting for us.
Hello?
Hi, Lindsay.
Hi.
Thanks, Barbara. I'm going to give this a try. I'll leave it up to you now.
Okay, I just need to conference Frank in. The conference ID didn't work?
No.
Just give me one second here. I'm just dialing his number. I apologize. I tested this out earlier and it worked. Technology.
Hello?
Hey, Frank, how are you?
Hi. Oh, you have a lot of technology. Are you on the line?
Yes.
I'm in this area.
Okay. All right, I think we got everybody here then.
There we go.
You want me to just get started?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much for, for the patience and the time. Unfortunately, I'm in Victoria right now and Lindsay, the Hallow, is in, is in Thunder Bay. So, thanks for, for taking the time out of your busy schedule to, to have us go through the audit results and the financial statements. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to quickly go through the audit results with you. You know, for all intents and purposes, the audit completes. There's a couple of things that are outstanding. Obviously, we need the members of council to approve the financial statements. There are, there is some legal correspondence that we're waiting on, but we don't expect there to be any surprises with regards to that. And then a, a letter that we asked management to sign called a manager, a petition letter that's part of our audit procedures, that we asked them to sign the date of the financial statement approved. Some of the more significant transactions, and Lindsay will go through some of these when she takes into the financial statements, but really, you know, when I, we look at your capital expenditures last year, the capital expenditures totaling just over 1.1 million dollars, and, you know, a variety of, of projects were undertaken, you know, building upgrades, you purchase some equipment, some motor vehicles, et cetera. Federal gas tax money, you did receive about $130,000 as your 2017 allocation, but you recognized revenue of 195,000, leaving a balance of about 542,000 still available to be spent. And then obviously, your landfill liability, so study what's completed this year, and the total landfill liability is about $590,000, which represents approximately a $60,000 increase. One of the areas concerned about is fraud or illegal acts, and, and you have to be aware that, you know, fraud should happen in any organization at any time. So we do design procedures to see if there's, there has been any fraud throughout the year. Obviously, if there's collusion, you know, where two members of, of your team collude to hide stuff, it's harder for us to find, but based on our procedures, we didn't identify any fraud or illegal acts this year. Okay? With regards to accounting estimates, and again, Lindsay will touch on these, but really, the two most significant accounting estimates are your allowance for doubtful accounts. So, you know, at the end of the year, we sit down with management, go through all the balances that are owing to you, and make sure that if there's any doubt that you'll collect those balances, that, that a provision or allowance gets put against them. And then finally, your landfill liability, obviously, there's a lot of estimates going into that calculation. So we basically go through and assess whether or not the, the, the assessment that's made is reasonable, and some of the, some of the assumptions are reasonable as well. We received excellent cooperation from the team in Manitowoc again this year, so we want to thank them for that. With regards to adjustments, you know, in, in almost all of our audits, when we go in and perform the audit, as we're going through, there are certain adjustments that get made, and Manitowoc is no different. So, you know, based on what we initially received from Margaret and likely was reported to, to council, there have been some adjustments made, nothing too significant, but some of the adjustments have been made, and some of those adjustments are to things like the allowance for doubtful accounts, because, you know, that only gets done once a year, things like the landfill liability, adjusting for any disposals of assets and those kinds of things, right? And then with regards to internal controls, you know, the internal control points are, are the same as what we've had in the past. The most significant one is the segregation of duties, and, you know, you've got a small team there, and, and obviously, you can't divide the duties appropriately from our perspective anyways. And we're not suggesting you go and hire a bunch of people, but what we are suggesting is, you know, continuing with some of the compensating controls, you know, having those extra checks and balances there. But from council's perspective, just making sure that, you know, when, when financial information does come to council, that you take a look at it, and you ask questions, and, and hopefully, management can help answer some of those questions for you to, to the point where you feel comfortable, and, and if there is a, a difference in the numbers, that it will get identified at that point. Do you want to confirm that we are independent of your organization? And then finally, the last thing I just want to mention is, you know, the accounting standards and the auditing standards are always evolving. We're not expecting either management or council to be experts in that area, that's our job, but we do want to make sure that, you know, any changes to those standards get properly reflected in your financial statements. And we always have in the past and will continue to work with management to make sure that if, if an accounting or an auditing pronouncement gets made, that they're reflected in your financial statements, so that when the users of the financial statements look at the township management statements, they can compare them with other municipalities across the province. Any questions before we jump into the statements themselves?
Go ahead, Councilor. Councilor Dunle, when you're going into the statements, are you going to be talking about, I see you talked briefly about the financial assets, liabilities and stuff. You haven't started on the revenues. Are you about to talk about that right now?
Yeah, we will do that. Lindsay will take you through the statements, and I'll interject when I feel necessary to add, add comments, but we'll, we'll take you through the statements on a line-by-line basis and give you the opportunity to ask questions if you have them.
Okay, thank you. I'll have a question later on.
Sure. All right, so the audit report itself, on page one of the financial statements, just a few pages in, and I believe you all have copies of the financial statements. So these statements are in draft, so what we've asked Margaret to do is provide you a copy of the statements. We've asked her also to take them back at the end of the presentation, and then we'll issue the finals, and those finals will be available to you to do whatever you want with them. So the reason I'm telling you that is a lot of times, members of council like writing on the financial statements, then when we take them back, they say, "Well, I have all my notes on there." So I encourage you, if you're going to take notes, maybe write it on a separate piece of paper if you want to take it home with you. Okay? So the independent auditors' report on page one, so it's addressed to the members of council inhabited the ratepayers of the township of Manitowoc. Again, that's who we work for. We have a good relationship with management, but at the end of the day, we're accountable to you as, as council and the inhabitants and ratepayers of the township. That first paragraph goes on to state what we've done, and that we've audited the financial statements that this report is attached to. Management's responsible for these financial statements, and it's important to note that because from an audit perspective, if we were responsible for the financial statements, we'd be auditing our own work, and obviously, that, that brings up a whole bunch of other issues. So the financial statements themselves are manager's responsibility, as well as the internal controls that feed into the financial statements. Our responsibility as your auditor is to issue an opinion on the financial statement based on our audit, and making sure that our audit is done in accordance with all the standards that are out there with regards to generally accepted auditing standards. So we turn to page two, it goes on to state that we believe that the audit evidence we have obtained is sufficient and appropriate to provide a basis for our audit opinion, which means we've, we've collected enough evidence to support the numbers. And then in our opinion, the consolidated financial statements present fairly and on material respects the financial position of the township of Manitowoc as at December 31st, and the results of its operations, changes in net financial assets, and its cash flows for the year that ended in accordance with Canadian public sector accounting standards. Now, this is a clean audit opinion, and this is what the stakeholders, the users of your financial statements are looking for when they're looking for the financial statements. So I'm going to ask Lindsay to take over and walk you through the financial statement, the numbers, so as the council was asking, hopefully, she'll answer your questions, and if she doesn't, then the opportunity is there for that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. So on page three is your consolidated statement of financial position, and this is at December 31st at a point in time. So you have total financial assets at the 7.7 versus the 7.3 in the prior year. You'll notice under cash, your cash balance is up, and this is mainly due to your reserve balances also being up that you'll see on Schedule 1. Your taxes receivable have gone up, and that's your, your actual receivables have gone up, but also your allowance for doubtful accounts has also been increased this year also. Under total liabilities, we have 2.3 this year versus the 2.3 in the prior year. Under deferred revenue, in this balance, it consists of mainly your gas tax, so there's approximately 543,000 that Frank mentioned in there of the federal gas tax money. Then we have the landfill closure and post-closure liability, which went up about $60,000 this year, and then you have your long-term debt, that, the changes in the repayments that happened in the year. That gives you net financial assets of the 5.4 million. Then you have non-financial assets of 19.4 million versus the 19.6 in the prior year. So under your tangible capital assets, you had additions of approximately 1.1 million, and some of the larger purchases include your pumper for, you know, 458,000, landfill compactor, and numerous vehicles. And you had your amortization of 1.3 taken off that, and then you did have a disposal of a building in the year of approximately 256,000. So then at the bottom there, you have your accumulated surplus of the 24.8 versus the 24.6 in the prior year. And again, I'd just like to mention, this is your PSAB surplus here, and it's not dollars to spend. On page number four, it's your consolidated statement of operations and accumulated surplus. You have total revenue budgeted of just over 7 million versus the 7.1 actual. You have under your taxation and user charges, you have the 4.5 versus the 4.7. You will notice that your user fees and service charges did go up, so you did have some increases in water and sewer, airport was up fuel, and then your dumpster revenue was up, and you'll see a corresponding increase in the dumpster expenses also that are under your environmental line when we get to the expenses. Under government transfers, you have your Government of Canada, and that amount there for 195,000 is your gas tax proceeds that you earned in the year, and then Provinces Ontario grant. Under other, you have your 548 versus your 476. You have your investment income, and it's 10,000 versus a budget of 7.5, so this is mainly revenue from your ONE fund. You have your other income, your penalties and interest, and then your rent and leases. On page number five...
I have a question.
Yeah, there's a question.
Question on the floor, please. Councilor Dunle, on page four, with regards to the other category with investment income, you have a budget at that 7,500, whereas the actual is 10,001, but you have the previous year at the actual of 48,665. If memory serves me well, that number was around 28,000 and some change. How did it increase by $20,000?
Oh, the comparative? We just had a reclass between, the bottom line is still the same of the 544 in the prior year, we just had a reclass between penalties and interest on taxes. There was 20,000 that was included in there that really should have been under investment income, that had already always been grouped with penalties and interest on taxes.
Okay, can you tell me why there would be such a, a drop this year, or sorry, 2016 with regards to the actual in 2017 of about 38,000?
It's mostly, and you'll see, when we get to the note to the financial statements, and it's, it's note, note number 12, your reserve and your reserve fund, the interest earned is approximately the same as the prior year, but it's really your unrealized loss in investments that had the big change. So there was a change in the market value that caused the swing there.
So from, from the municipality's perspective, you, your investment strategy really is, is to use the ONE fund, and the ONE fund, obviously, they make the investments on behalf of the people that invest in the ONE fund. The ONE fund is similar to, to a big mutual fund, right? So they take your money and they go out and invest it, and then based on what investments they make, every year, you'll have what we consider an unrealized gain or loss. What that means is, you know, if you bought a share in ONE fund for $100, and at the end of the year, it's worth $95, you've got a $5 unrealized loss. You haven't realized it because you haven't sold that share, it's still sitting in your portfolio. So it can, you know, next year, it could either reverse and be worth $110, and now you've got a $10 unrealized gain, or it can continue to stay the same or slide the other way. So what Lindsay is saying is, that $10,000, there's a portion of that that's unrealized in the sense that you haven't sold that asset yet. So until you actually sell it, you haven't realized that loss, but if you were to sell it on December 31st, that's all the money you would get. You'd actually lose money on that stock. Does that make sense?
Well, it makes sense on the investment part, but it doesn't make sense why the township would consider to use this ONE fund investor when over the past three years, we have been losing investment income constantly. Three years ago, it was at 88,000, then it dropped to 62, then it dropped to 28, but it's noted at 48 right now, and now it's projected for 10,000, so, I know, I'm not sure if you're an investor broker, but with regards for an audit perspective, would you think that council should take a, a really good look at this and perhaps find a different investment firm?
Well, they could. They, from an audit perspective, we audit the numbers that are there, right? So that's what's, what's really transpired. From, from council's perspective, and, and Margaret, you might have to help me out on this, like, the first step in any investment decision is to come up with an investment strategy, to see how much risk the members of council are willing to take, and, you know, once you come up with your investment policy, then deciding, you know, who is the best person to invest that with. The, the ONE fund is, is a, is a fund that the ministry is, is encouraging municipalities to invest in because they believe it's, it's lesser risk, but obviously, you know, just like any other investment portfolio, you're going to have good years and bad years. And I'm not advocating for the ONE fund because it's, I'm indifferent as to whether or not you use the ONE fund or a bank for that matter. At the end of the day, it really comes down to council deciding what kind of investments they want to invest in and how much risk they want to take, and then giving that direction to, to management to go out and do it. I, you know, it's going to sound like I'm defending management, but unless management gets direction on how much risk council's going to take, they're going to take the approach that, you know, they're going to try to stay in those investments that councils allow them to invest in, right? So you go through the exercise of coming up with an investment policy and then deciding who you're going to invest with. That, that could be, could be a short, you know, not a very time-consuming endeavor, but it could be very time-consuming depending on how specific council wants to be.
Frank, just to be clear, this happens even with our own personal investments, but I don't want to state that.
Absolutely.
This is not unusual.
No. No, what's, what's important to note here, and I said it earlier, is that those losses are unrealized, meaning that, you know, if, if you talk to the ONE fund and they think that those investments are going to rebound or recover, then it's really up to council to make the decision that they want to stay with the ONE fund. If they were to, if you were to move all that money at December 31st, you would actually be forced to realize those losses. So if you paid $100 for that, that share, and it's worth 95, you would sell it for $95, right? Right now, it's just a paper loss, you haven't really lost it. I mean, that's what it's worth at December 31st, but until you actually sell it, you haven't lost that money.
Well, sir, I want to thank you for your explanation. It, it does make sense what you're saying, but what doesn't make sense to me is, on September 1st, I read an article in Chronicle Journal from Thunder Bay, and he said that our markets were in a bull market since 2013, and they're not too sure when the bubble's going to burst. And this is coming from an investor brokerage firm for RBC, and...
Right.
And now, for the past three years, we're losing money, and it's in a bull market. It just doesn't make sense.
Well, you know, and this is why, and I didn't want to get into too much of the nitty-gritty, so to speak, but, you know, the ONE fund, if, if the ONE fund went out and, you know, five, four or five years ago, when interest rates were really low, and they, they bought a whole bunch of bonds, let's say, and they bought bonds at a, at 1.5% or 2% return, and the markets got stronger, and, you know, me as an investor, back in 2000, say, 2015, if I could buy a stock or bond for $100, and it had a, an interest rate of, say, 2%, to keep it simple, I'd pay $100 for that stock or bond. If the interest rates go up to 2.5%, that bond doesn't, the interest rate doesn't change, it's locked at 2%, so it's a fairly safe investment, right? You're going to get your 2%. But if I'm buying it in 2018, and interest rates are now 2.5% versus 2%, I'm not going to pay $100 for that bond anymore, right? I'm going to pay, say, $95, because I can, I can go buy a bond for $100 and get 2.5%. So, you know, if, if it truly is a bond, if, if you hold on to that bond until it matures, you're going to get your $100. But it's at that point in time, depending on what interest rates on the bond versus what the market shows, that's what drives the fair market value of those numbers. So the article you read in the paper is true, I mean, the, the markets are doing very well, but those markets that are doing well are, are stocks and bonds and corporations for the most part, right? And from what I understand, the ONE fund doesn't put a lot of money in stocks and bonds, in stocks of corporations because they're deemed to be riskier, right? So you, you'll get 5% or 6% on, on a stock of, you know, Coca-Cola, but you could also lose 5% to 10%, whereas they, they take a more risk-averse approach where they're buying, you know, government bonds, and they're buying fixed-income stock, right? So I think that's where, you know, the challenge is, because, yeah, the markets right now, if you, if you invested personally, you bought Coca-Cola stocks, and Coca-Cola stock went up by 10%, you get a 10% return, but you're not going to get a 10% return on a bond or some of the more safer investments. So it really comes down to what you've invested in, and that's why I think council needs to get their, to wrap their head around, how much risk are they willing to take on? Because if you start buying, like, if you start buying gold stock, right, you can get a 20% to 25% return in one year, which could also lose it all. So how much risk does council really want to take? And that's a tough decision for council.
Frank, thank you for your explanation, and trying to get in to that lens, and I appreciate that, and I think everyone here does, but I don't think that it's part of the audit report at this point, or maybe with your...
Frank, just to be clear, this happens even with our own personal investments, but I don't understand.
Absolutely.
This is not unusual.
No. No. What's important to note here, and I said it earlier, is that those losses are unrealized, meaning that, you know, if you talk to the one fund and they think that those investments are going to rebound or recover, then it's really up to council to make the decision that they want to stay with the one fund. If they were to... If you were to move all that money at December thirty-first, you would actually be forced to realize those losses. So if you paid a hundred dollars for that share and it's worth ninety-five, you would sell it for ninety-five dollars, right? Right now it's just a paper loss. You haven't really lost it. I mean, that's what it's worth at December thirty-first, but until you actually sell it, you haven't lost that money.
Well, sir, I want to thank you for your explanation. It does make sense what you're saying, but what doesn't make sense to me is, on September first, I read an article in Chronicle Journal from Thunder Bay, and he said that our markets were in a bull market since two thousand and thirteen, and they're not too sure when the bubble's going to burst. And this is coming from an investor brokerage firm for RBC.
Right.
And now, for the past three years, we're losing money, and it's in a bull market. It just doesn't make sense.
Well, you know, and this is why I didn't want to get into too much of the nitty-gritty, so to speak. But, you know, the one fund, if the one fund went out and, you know, five, four or five years ago, when interest rates were really low, and they bought a whole bunch of bonds, let's say, and they bought bonds at one and a half or two percent return, and the markets got stronger, and, you know, me as an investor, back in two thousand and... Say, two thousand and fifteen, if I could buy a stock or bond for a hundred dollars, and it had an interest rate of, say, two percent, to keep it simple, I'd pay a hundred dollars for that stock or bond. If the interest rates go up to two and a half percent, that bond, the interest rate doesn't change. It's locked at two percent, so it's a fairly safe investment, right? You're going to get your two percent. But if I'm buying it in two thousand and eighteen, and interest rates are now two-point-five percent versus two percent, I'm not going to pay a hundred dollars for that bond anymore, right? I'm going to pay, say, ninety-five dollars, because I can go buy a bond for a hundred dollars and get two and a half percent. So, you know, if it truly is a bond, if you hold on to that bond until it matures, you're going to get your hundred dollars. But at that point in time, depending on what interest rates on the bond versus what the market shows, that's what drives the fair market value of those numbers. So the article you read in the paper is true. I mean, the markets are doing very well, but those markets that are doing well are stocks and bonds and corporations for the most part, right? And from what I understand, the one fund doesn't put a lot of money in stocks and bonds, in stocks of corporations, because they're deemed to be riskier, right? So you'll get five or six percent on a stock of Coca-Cola, but you could also lose five to ten percent, whereas they take a more risk-averse approach where they're buying, you know, government bonds and they're buying fixed income stuff, right? So I think that's where, you know, the challenge is, because, yeah, the markets right now, if you invested personally and you bought Coca-Cola stocks, and Coca-Cola stock went up by ten percent, you get a ten percent return. But you're not going to get a ten percent return on a bond or some of the more safer investments.
Okay.
So it really comes down to what you've invested in, and that's why I think council needs to get their... To wrap their head around, how much risk are they willing to take on? Because if you start buying, like, if you start buying gold stock, right, you can get a twenty to twenty-five percent return in one year, which could also lose it all. So how much risk does council really want to take?
Frank, thank you.
And that's a tough decision for council.
Frank, thank you for your explanation and trying to get in to that length. And I appreciate that, and I think everyone here does, but I don't think that it's part of the audit report at this point, or maybe with your permission, we should move on.
Okay.
Thank you.
For sure. All right. Back to you, Lindsay.
Thank you. I'm just on page five. Under the expenses, the total budget expenses of two-point-eight versus the six-point-seven. So under general government, you will notice that there was a project that weren't completed during the year, and this is mainly due to staff shortages. So the reception area, there was an asset management plan, the skate park feasibility, those projects all weren't undertaken in the year that were budgeted for. Under protection to persons and property, you know, under there, again, wages were down. Under transportation, the salaries were also under budget. Under environmental services, there was hydro and repairs and maintenance were also under budget. And then under planning and development, your other building category was also under budget, and then your EDC corner property was also under budget. So this gives you net revenues before other items of three-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand. Then you do have a loss on disposal of the capital assets for the building during the year. Then you have your annual surplus deficit of two-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand, plus your beginning surplus of the twenty-four-point-six-million, gives you your ending accumulated surplus of the twenty-four-point-eight-million. And again, this is the PSAB surplus, not your actual surplus. So at this point, if we can just... If there's any questions, or if not, then we can go to schedule one for a breakdown of the accumulated surplus, and that's on page twenty.
Any questions? Doesn't seem to be any.
Okay. So on page twenty. So your current year in-year surplus has been transferred into the reserves, and that's a standing bylaw. So you do then have your investment in capital assets of your nineteen-four million, and then your unfunded items. So these are items that will be funded in the future, so that's your long-term debt and your landfill closure and post-closure liability. And then you have your total reserves of your one-point-one million, and the total reserve funds of the five-point-three-million, giving you the accumulated surplus of the twenty-four-point-eight-million that you saw on the other page. So then, I'll bring you back to page number six for your statement of changes in net financial assets. We saw that the annual surplus of the two-hundred-and-sixty-eight, plus increases and decreases in your net financial assets, your beginning net financial assets give you your ending net financial assets of the five-point-four-million that you saw on the statement of financial On page number seven is your statement of cash flows. Let's just go through your sources and uses of cash and reconcile to your cash balance at your end. And then the next few pages are your significant accounting policies. I won't go through them in detail, but I'll just make note that there's been no changes from the prior year. And then on page thirteen, we start some of the other notes, and these just show you some of the more details of the balances that you saw. So you'll see there, on page number three, you have your taxes receivable. So your taxes receivable have gone up in the current year, and your allowance has also gone up. On note number four, you have your accounts receivable, and we just give you more of a breakdown of the balances there. On page number fourteen, you have your deferred revenue. So I was mentioning that you can see there, your gas tax balance was five-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand at the end of the year, and it just gives you a continuity of the beginning balance, the proceeds, and what was earned during the year. And just to remind you, your deferred revenue is cash that you do have in the bank that has not been earned yet, so it's sitting as deferred revenue. We haven't recognized it as revenue yet because the project hasn't happened. On page number fifteen, you have your landfill note and your long-term debt note. And then it just breaks out the principal payments due in the next few years for your debts at the bottom there. Page number sixteen, we just have a bit more details on the tangible capital assets and your segmented information, and what's included in each segment, and it corresponds to schedule number three. And then on page number eighteen, we have the reserve and reserve fund continuity. So as I was mentioning before, you can see your transfers for your reserve and reserve funds. You'll see there, as we're mentioning, the interest, and then you see the unrealized loss on investments broken out, and then the interfund allocation of the interest, and then your decrease there, to give you your balances that tied into schedule one. Note number fourteen would be a new note this year that we've added, and it's just for the Aqua agreement that was signed during the year. So we just included the amount that was expensed in the year, and then the future operating costs for two thousand and eighteen. And there was a seven-year agreement that was signed in the year. Note number fifteen is your budget of figures note. So this reconciles the budget that you approved to the budget that's actually presented on the statement of operations. Some of the adjustments that we make in the adjustment column are your PSAB adjustments, and that's for your tangible capital assets, your debt payments, and your amortization. And then on page twenty, we've already gone through schedule one. On page twenty-one is your schedule two, which is your tangible capital asset detail. In here, you'll see your additions. You did have some building upgrades. Under vehicles, you have the pumper that you purchased and the landfill compactor. Under machinery and equipment, there was some heating control upgrades, some asphalt equipment purchased in the year. And then you'll see the disposal layer for the building. And then on page number twenty-two is your schedule three, so this is your consolidated schedule of segmented disclosure, and it just shows you the statement of operations detailed by segment here. And then we've attached the trust fund statement at the back. That concludes my presentation. Is there any questions?
No, three, any? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I thank you very much for your time.
Frank, I also think from the other document that you have provided, did you want to go over that or just for the information?
Well, I went through it at the beginning. I gave them the summary of that... You're talking about the audit results package?
Yes.
Yeah, so I went through that at the beginning.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Frank.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye now.
So I'd like to collect your comments, please. So moved by councillor Plummer, seconded by councillor Rule, resolved that council has provided... Has been provided a presentation by Grant Thornton, auditor, for the draft of two thousand and seventeen, consulted latest financial statement for the township. And be it further resolved upon conclusion of council review, council does hereby approve the draft version as presented. Questions or comments? Call favor, both none, carry. So we'll move on to five-oh-two, presentation from Dr. DeMille. So just a short bio for Dr. DeMille, which is probably a lot longer than it is. Dr. DeMille is the medical officer of the health for the Thunder Bay District Health Unit. A role that she has officially for two and a half years. Before taking on this role, she served as associate medical officer of health. She initially came to Northwestern Ontario in nineteen ninety-seven, following medical school to train for family medicine. She worked ten years as a family physician, practicing both in Thunder Bay and in a number of smaller communities in Northwestern Ontario. Pursuing an interest in public health in two thousand and nine, she entered the public health and preventive maintenance residency program at the Northern Ontario School of Medicine in Thunder Bay. She received her specialist certification in public health on the Royal College of Physicians and Surgeons of Canada in two thousand and twelve, and started work with Thunder Bay District Health Unit that fall. She is passionate about public health, had particular interest in health equity, indigenous health, and in enhancing collaborative relationship between public health and healthcare.
Well, thank you very much for having me here. It's very nice to come to Manitowash, one of the community in the Canadian area, and to meet with you. I'd like to introduce Carolyn Tate, who's our manager of our district office. Slight delay. Okay. So what I anticipate is I'll do about a fifteen-minute presentation about public health and about TVDHU and the work that we're doing here, and I'd be happy to take any of your questions. And if I can't after that, and if I can't answer them, I'll commit to finding the answers and getting back to you. I provided a bit of an outline here. I want to talk just basically about public health and the legislative framework that surrounds public health units like TVDHU. I'll talk a bit about the kind of programs and services that we offer throughout our area. I'll talk a bit about public health and some of the issues that we face, or how we tackle public health issues and programs, and then specifically talk about delivery of public health programs and services in the district and with a focus on Manitowash, and then give you a sense of what we're currently dealing with and the challenges that we're facing, and then finish off with some aspects of the budget. So this is a definition of public health that is found in our new public health standards or the updated public health standards. It does cover off... It's kind of hard. I don't have an elevator speech for public health because it's kind of hard to kind of capture what public health is and does in a short period of time. But this slide does capture a couple of the key aspects. Public health is focused on populations or communities, and not so much at the individual level. We focus on three areas, sort of promoting health and enhancing individuals' or populations' health and well-being, preventing disease, and protecting health. And we... Public health likes to take an upstream approach to it, meaning before people develop illnesses and become sick, we want to sort of support people throughout their life in being healthy and well. With regards to the legislation around public health units such as the Thunder Bay District Health Unit, it's largely governed under the Health Protection and Promotion Act of Ontario. And if you're familiar with that, it certainly does... It notes that municipalities are responsible for public health in the public health unit area. So once again, I appreciate this opportunity to come talk to you and share this with you because you are ultimately responsible for public health. Under the HBPA, it does indicate that the province, particularly the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care, may pay up to seventy-five percent of the funding. Now, we certainly do receive a lot of that. If the province didn't do that, then the municipalities would be responsible for the full cost. There is a board of health, and appropriately, it does have representation from municipalities, and the number of representatives, municipal reps... Or the number of non-municipal reps cannot exceed the number of municipal reps, so that there's always more representation from municipalities than other board members. In the Health Protection and Promotion Act, the province, though, is the one that sets the mandate for public health and lists a whole series of requirements for boards of health. And I've taken a screenshot of the latest version, which came into effect in January of this year, of the Ontario Public Health Standards. This is a list of... It's a high-level list of the kinds of programs that we do at the Thunder Bay District Health Unit. We have two main public health divisions called Health Protection Division and Health Promotion Division, and I've listed the programs under those. So I'll just go through this fairly quickly, but in under Health Protection, infectious diseases, there are many infectious diseases that are reportable to public health. So we know when somebody gets... In anywhere in the health area, we get the information about individuals who have these infectious diseases, and we use that information not only for surveillance purposes to monitor the burden of infectious diseases, but we also ensure that cases are appropriately treated, that anybody else around those individuals who may have also had that particular disease are managed appropriately, and any outbreaks, we manage. Sexual health is also about infectious diseases, as well as providing counseling around contraceptive options primarily targeted to young adults. We do an immunization program, vaccine preventable diseases. That includes a lot of childhood immunizations, adult immunizations, as well as flu clinics and flu. Harm reduction relates to the distribution of needles and substance use-related harm-reduction practices, including, more recently, the distribution of naloxone for use and for overdose prevention. Under oral health, we do screening in schools, and as well, a number of initiatives related to preventive oral health care. Our environmental health program is largely staffed by public health inspectors who are responsible for areas around food safety, water safety, health hazards, personal service settings, and vector-borne diseases. So they do a lot of inspections, and it relates to even municipal water systems and small drinking water systems, for example, under water safety. Under infection prevention and control, we... These are often related to outbreaks in long-term care homes. As well, we support others, hospitals, for example, and even medical clinics around infection prevention and control practices to reduce the spread of any infectious diseases in those areas. And we do have an emergency preparedness mandate, so anything that, for example, might impact water or food safety or health hazards, we're well-prepared to handle that, and we do have an on-call system for that. Under health promotion, family health deals from everything, from healthy pregnancies, breastfeeding, early childhood development. Healthy schools is a lot of work that we do with schools in implementing, for example, a comprehensive school health model with principals and teachers and students in schools in order to support the adoption of healthy behaviors in those schools. We run a healthy babies, healthy children program, which supports families and children at risk in the early years. Our healthy living program focuses on what I call the good stuff, the promoting of physical activity and healthy nutrition. And the remaining three programs there, tobacco substance and use, I call preventing the bad stuff. So certainly trying to reduce tobacco use and tobacco-related diseases. Substance use has a lot of focus around alcohol as well, and certainly cannabis will fall into that, and then injury prevention activities. The way we approach public health issues and the way our programs are designed, there's a number of different ways we might plan our activities. Some of them are focused on individuals, so immunization, when we immunize somebody, or clinical service... or clinical services, or Healthy Babies, Healthy Children Program, which is focused on, you know, families and children. However, a lot of our work isn't directly dealing with the individuals. We do, for example, as I mentioned, work with schools, and try, and support schools in becoming, in supporting the health of their students. And there's a number of ways that we do operate that way. We also work with workplaces and supporting health of employees. And of course, we work broadly with communities, such as municipalities. We do a lot of work around healthy public policy, because this is one of the ways public health is most effective. So we advocate for public policy that promotes health. This might be around the built environment, for example. Thunder Bay, for example, has a lot of multi-use trails, or bike lanes, which allow people to be able to alternative forms of transportation other than cars. So that supports people's, the population's, physical activity. We're currently, in terms of what we're doing around marijuana or cannabis, with the legalization coming up, providing a lot of input into government policy and legislation, both at the provincial and federal level, in order to reduce the potential harms associated with cannabis. We do a lot of work at the systems level. So for example, I mentioned immunization programming that we do. So we do do immunizations of individuals, but we also are responsible for the system in the Thunder Bay District Health Unit area. That includes maintaining the Panorama Immunization Database. The Enforcement of the Immunization of School Pupils Act, which increases the immunization rates in early childhood in schools. We do the fridge inspections, so that any other provider, such as family health teams who are providing immunizations, that their fridges are being maintained at the appropriate temperature, so that the vaccine is still effective. So that's what I mean when I talk about sort of system-level issues. As well, we also have increased connectivity with the Local Health Integration Network around planning and supporting them in not just focusing on sort of the illness aspect, but also considering a public health and health equity lens. I mentioned a number of our enforcement activities around food and water, and the inspections that we do, and orders we might issue to ensure that food premises or water systems are safe for the public. We also do enforcement around tobacco sales to youth, for example. And our protection part that I've indicated there is we want to, this primarily relates to infectious diseases, so we do want to help protect the population and from infectious diseases by ensuring that individuals with infectious diseases that can't be transmitted to others are managed appropriately, anybody who might be at risk is managed appropriately, and certainly that we're monitoring and dealing with outbreaks as they might happen. Under that Ontario Public Health Standards, some of our programs, the work that we do, is very prescribed by the ministry. This is mostly the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care. However, we also develop a lot of programs that are actually based on community needs and community priorities, to deal, actually, just as I said, with the needs and priorities of the community. There's also a lot of underlying public health science that goes into how we design our programs and what we do. So that includes using data, such as epidemiological data, to understand what's going on, what, where, what, you know, the burden of illness, or the issues and the risk factors in the population. We monitor trends, for example, of infectious diseases, and how we're doing overall as a population. We consider health equity, that is, sometimes in a population, there are groups or subpopulations that are at greater risk, and we want to just understand who's at greater risk, and to try to reduce health inequities in the population. And we do evaluate our programs to make sure that we're effective. Down at the bottom there, I've indicated the four principles that underlie the Ontario Public Health Standards. So the idea that we design programs or deliver programs based on need, we understand that what is the need in the population, and then develop programs to meet that, to address that need. We want to have impact, and we want to make sure, you know, by, through evaluation, that we're having impact. We want to have the capacity to be able to do all the work that we're expected to do. And we do a lot of it through partnership, collaboration, and with community engagement. So this slide relates to how we deliver public health programs and services in the district and our district communities. So we do have staff in the district, including public health nurses, community health promotion resource people, and program supports. And they do a lot of the frontline work in our district communities. We, our main office is in Thunder Bay, and there's a lot of programs that we have there around, you know, things like tobacco, or healthy visiting programs that I listed a few slides ago. And when they're rolling out campaigns or other activities, we make sure that that's also happening in the district. We also respond to any requests that come from our district staff or from community partners in the district. There are specific programs, that it's a combination of staff from the main office and from the district, our district staff. So I've mentioned some of the infectious diseases and infection prevention and control. There's a lot of knowledge and expertise that we have at the main office around some of the intricacies of the follow-up on cases and outbreak management. So they provide a lot of support, but work with the public health nurses in the district. Oral Health, we have dental hygienists and oral health, and dental health educators, who travel to the district to deliver the screening programs and preventative oral health care. Immunization and Healthy Babies, Healthy Children is also a combination. The immunization schedule for children is quite complicated, even I don't, I have trouble following it, but I certainly have staff who know it pretty much like the back of their hand. And the same with Healthy Babies, Healthy Children, it's quite an evidence-based, but quite protocol-driven program. And of course, our environmental health with public health inspectors are regularly traveling to the district communities to do their inspections and follow-up on any reports of health hazard, as are our tobacco enforcement officers. And our Emergency Preparedness Program, which includes a twenty-four-seven on-call, is run primarily out of our main office. And so myself, or Emily Groot, who's the Associate Medical Officer of Health, a public health inspector, and during the wintertime, a public health nurse, are always on-call. Here in Manitouage, we actually have a very sort of innovative arrangement with the local family health team and with the Rural Health Hub that's centered in Sonte Manitouage Health for the delivery of health promotion programming, and that's part of the Rural Health Hub. And we were, Carolyn and I were actually meeting with them this afternoon, and I think had a very productive meeting. And we also respond to any community-driven projects or activities, so that may be coming out of a community. And I particularly noted the Healthy Kids Community Challenge, the Superior North Greenstone version of that, which I know Manitouage was a part of. So we were, we did some work in that, and I'll speak a little bit more about that in my next slide. Carolyn was also participatory in the District of Thunder Bay Subregion Advisory Committee under the, with the Local Health Integration Network. This slide just sort of highlights a couple of sort of projects or larger work that we've been doing that, so I'll maybe start off with the Healthy Kids Community Challenge, because this has been unfolding for the last three years with all our district municipalities, including Manitouage. And that was involving the development of a healthy, of a children's charter, which a number of municipalities and other partners signed on to. And we provided a lot of the data through our epidemiologists and the evidence of our programming that informed that charter. And in our district communities, including in Manitouage, we supported the activities that were rolled out over the last three years. I'll go up to the top with the Superior Mental Wellness at Work. This was a project led by our Healthy Living Team out of Thunder Bay, sponsored through a grant by the Ministry of Labor, so a hundred percent funded through that, that was promoting the implementation of the national standard for psychological health and safety in workplaces. So this was based on the need that we had recognized, that a number, that a lot of our workplaces in the Thunder Bay District Health Unit area, when we did an evaluation of what their needs were, they identified mental wellness and mental health as a big part of their need. And this particular standard, which is a national standard, helps workplaces address mental health and mental wellness in the workplace. And so through that project, which did, was involving a number of key partners, like Lakehead University, the Health Unit, we reached out to a wide variety of organizations, both in Thunder Bay and in the district, and supported a work on the standard, called Standard to Action, to implement, so that workplaces could implement the standard in their workplace. We also had a speaker series, where people could listen to other examples of speakers who were knowledgeable and experts around mental health in the workplace and the role of employers. So that is something that was quite successful, I think, in our, in the final evaluation over the last two years, and we do have resources on our website for that. The upper right corner shows a child being immunized, and I, this is some work we've been successful with, and I think Manitouage is a star example of the success in terms of working with our community partners, like family health teams, to ensure that children are immunized, are up to date on their immunization, and, you know, when they should be, so that's not delayed. And we actually, under the Immunization of School Pupils Act, can suspend students from school if they're not up to date. And we really reduce that sort of suspension by a lot of promotion work and working with our partners. So that was just one success that we certainly had in the district. I'll mention Dine Wise, it's something that's coming down the pipeline for the district communities. This is the, was implemented in the city of Thunder Bay last year. It is the scorecards that are on all restaurants, A, B, C, or D, and the colors that basically are a measure of the food safety practices at the last inspection, when our public health inspectors go in. Now, it was a bit easier to do that in Thunder Bay, because it was one of their bylaws to, was just tweak, to make food premises in Thunder Bay have to post what we give them to post. So that's why you see it in Thunder Bay. But what's happening now is the food premise regulation under the Health Protection and Promotion Act was updated, came into effect July first of this year, that says all, all across Ontario, food premises, so restaurants and such, have to post what public health gives them to post. So when we will be launching this in the district communities in twenty nineteen, where, when they get, when restaurants and such get inspected, they will then get the scorecard, which they will have to post on their, on the outside. So the current issues and challenges that we currently face, certainly Thunder Bay District Health Unit, we have, overall, compared to the rest of Ontario, worse overall health and health outcomes. And some of the ones that I've mentioned there, so the opioid overdose, use and overdose, certain infectious diseases, like infectious group A strep, hepatitis C, for example, and sexually transmitted infections are higher here than compared to the rest of Ontario. Our rates of excessive consumption of alcohol, and even sort of chronic consumption that's over the low-risk drinking guidelines are higher here in the north and in Thunder Bay District Health Unit. And our smoking rates, although they do drop, they're not as low as in some other areas of the province. So that remains a challenge in terms of public health and the need that we have in the Thunder Bay District Health Unit area. With respect to our new mandate, there's, there's some increased requirements for Board of Health. There's a broader range of topics that we can now address. There's some, that's positive, but at the same time, that's sort of more, more topics to address. There's a greater expectation provincially now around engagement with Indigenous populations. Although we do have a lot of partnerships already with Indigenous communities and populations, that does put a significant increased burden on us, given the number of actual First Nations communities that fall in this area. There are specific things that have been added, for example, visual health screening, which will now take place for SK students, all SK students. So that's just a new activity that we will have to do, that we will be implementing this school year. And then I've mentioned the greater linkage with the Local Health Integration Network and joint planning and joint initiatives that we'll be doing. And I'm very appreciative of strengthened accountability requirements. I think we spend public funds, we should be accountable, but that there are increased requirements around that, which will take more, more effort and more time to do. We do have some emerging public health issues. Certainly cannabis is an upcoming concern that we've already been involved in. We have to address that within our current staffing complement and our current budget. The fiscal pressures, I probably don't have to tell you much about that, you're probably well aware, but certainly that continues to be an issue. Staffing issues, recruitment and retention, especially in our district offices. And the final one there is some uncertainties around what the former level of government was calling Public Health Transformation, and the current new government. I will also actually mention, under emerging public health issues, I mentioned sort of cannabis there, but also there's a, we're currently experiencing a tuberculosis outbreak in the homeless population in the city of Thunder Bay. That has had some links to district communities, as people, you know, travel. And that's, that's certainly a significant challenge for twenty eighteen that we're experiencing in managing that, but it will have implications for us over the next couple of years as This is, I think, my final slide. It's just, it sort of captures our budget as, over the last four years. And of course, the component that you pay is the municipal levy, that's over fifteen or sixteen, all the gated municipalities. We have not actually increased the municipal levy since twenty fifteen, and that reflects twenty-four dollars and sixty cents per capita. I'll note that the health unit to the east of us is much higher. And it also is that the, on the cost-shared side, the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care has not also increased the budget for a number of years since twenty fifteen. However, the day before the RIT dropped in May, we did receive the positive news that we, they were giving us an increase of actually three percent on the ministry portion of the cost-shared funding. So we did get some additional funding this year. A number of health units across the province did get that. I think that partly reflects the need, the fact that we have worse health outcomes overall. As well, the Board of Health had requested some additional funding because of the tuberculosis outbreak in Thunder Bay, which will have ongoing issues. We do have a number of ministry programs that are a hundred percent funded by the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care. These also have been with no increases for many years. However, over the last couple of years, we did get additional funds added to the list that were approved. For example, the Expanded Harm Reduction Program funding, which we received word of last summer, actually allowed us to expand our harm reduction program, specifically our naloxone provision and overdose prevention work that we were doing. So that was, that was fortunate to get that, as well as we've received some base funding that is a hundred percent funded for Indigenous communities and engagement. We do have a number of one-time initiatives, and you'll note that the number for twenty eighteen is a little bit higher than previous years. One of the reasons for that is we're doing the Northern Fruit and Vegetable Program, which is a very prescribed program by the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care, but it's a, it's a good program, I think, where we go into schools and every week between January and June, schoolchildren, or the school receives fruit and vegetables, that teachers are, provide resources to be able to prepare those. And a program like that is shown to be helpful in increasing the number of fruit and vegetables that children are eating. In that twenty eighteen funding, we also got some capital repair. In that 2018 funding, we also got some capital repair and one-time funding. Oh, I felt sorry. I wanted to say, because I do recognize that you do pay part of that levy, and I do appreciate that you do that. And I do understand that likely you, like all other municipalities, are faced fiscal challenges as well. So we certainly commit to managing managing that the funding that we do get efficiently. And we have had a number of we've reduced costs and found efficiencies over the last couple of number of years. We focus often on what we call maximizing the 100% funding, so we make sure we use that money well, which can help take the pressure off our cost share budget. We are enhancing our approach to program planning. Again, this is getting back to the principles of the Ontario Public Health Standards that look at need and impact. So we want to make sure that what we're doing is actually addressing the need and that we're having impact. And we also look for other sources of funding. So when I talked about the Superior Mental Wellness at Work, that was actually a project funded by the Ministry of Labor. It was a two-year grant that we received. So we applied for it and received it and then could advance on some important work related to that. So that, I believe, yep, is my my final slide. So if there's opportunity for questions, I'm.
Thank you, Doctor. Are there any questions? Yes, Counselor?
Doctor DeMille, when you were talking about the environmental part of your program, we have a water agency that helps takes care of our water issues. If there happens to be some kind of water contamination, who has the point lead on this with regards to rectifying any kind of contamination? Is it going to be Aqua or is it going to be the Board of Health?
So thank you for your question. So what our our role and responsibility with the municipal water system is that we receive any reports. It is it's all municipal water treatment plant operators are obligated to inform us if there's anything of concern in the water and through their appropriate testing and of that. And we will work with them or have expectations on any municipal water system of the what they have to do, including potentially issuing a boil water advisory, for example, if needed. And then I believe so we sort of hold those municipal water treatment plant operators accountable to making sure that they're not putting the public at risk. I think what what the the treatment plant individuals will do is work with Aqua, I think, if they have that relationship, to make sure that whatever an issue is, it's rectified.
Any questions?
I have a three moment. I was just wondering the coordination team and whatever else comes the dimensional was the mention of whether there are protections or what is it?
So we don't that's probably when that's not considered a public health issue. We might undertake work around sort of like age-friendly communities to support health and wellness as people age, all through their life. But once they have issues like an illness or something like dementia, it's really we don't deal with. It's more the healthcare the healthcare with the healthcare system and the support for the whole community.
Is that also why you're also putting mental health?
So what we the the role of public health is to around areas of mental health is actually to to promote mental well-being and resiliency that can reduce the risk of the development of mental health issues. So we do a lot of work, for example, within schoolchildren around mental health and mental resiliency and anti-bullying.
My third comment is, I would have to say in the Healthy Kids budget that's been winding down in September, thought they are going to try to other funding, but that's a difficult question.
Yeah, that was the Healthy Kids Community Challenge was a three-year grant from the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care, and that three years is finished with thinking that it's coming up. I've already been in discussion with the chair co-chairs of the advisor, the steering committee of us, and certainly our public health nurses and Carolyn were very much a part of that work, and we're looking at how to support the sustainability of some of the issues and actions that were started with.
Any other question, Doctor DeMille?
Yes, I have two more. Your Dine Wise scorecard, I dine quite often in Thunder Bay, and I do see those scorecards. What would the difference be between a reading of A and B?
It's I like the way our manager of environmental health describes it. It's like a school report card, and you get an A or a B, so it's kind of the same. Like A is very good, but B is good. It is actually based on a scoring sheet that and these are these are not scheduled inspections. So public health inspectors just show up and expect access to the kitchen and to look around. And then people, you know, start off at 100%, and then they're docked points as they're as certain infractions are noted. And then I think it's I can't remember the exact actual score, but they get their score based on that. But, you know, a B is still good. It just means that they either, you know, they might have had a couple of infractions that kind of drop them down to that. But A, A is A is better.
A drop down to that would be, would that be for maybe serving aged food that perhaps should have been discarded or dirty pots and pans or?
So I think that gets into the detail of what the actual inspectors are looking for, and there's a wide variety of things in terms of how they're storing, how they're managing the temperature of food, how they're doing all the cleaning, even for food premise operators and people who work there, do they have places where they can wash their hands? And is there soap? And are they washing their hands? All of these things go under, you know, to in part of a comprehensive inspection of a food premise. I should say the Dine Wise, we've evaluated it, and actually we'll be presenting this to the Board of Health next week. But the posting of the letter scores has prompted food premises to really up their their game when it comes to food safety practices. So we're seeing the As go up and the bad ones go down.
That's great.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Doctor, but are we is the Health Unit not going to post an explanation of these readings for the public?
Yes, so we do have information on our website about the Dine Wise scoring, and the Dine Wise guide is there. Now, it needs to be updated because of the food premise regulations being updated. We will be as well, I think in 2019, having the scores available on the website with more information on the website about particular food premises, and so there's more transparency and exposure.
One final question. Your one-time funding for schools and vegetables program that you have, is that just for Thunder Bay or is that for all municipalities?
It is, yeah. It's absolutely for all municipalities.
So that program's actually activated here in Manitowoc?
Yep, it started last year, but I think there was a delayed start. The fruits or vegetables are distributed by the Ontario Fruit and Vegetable Growers Association, and schools had to have fridges, and so there was a little extra coordination, and the launch had to be delayed. So I don't think it happened for the full six months last year, but I don't I believe it's going to happen and be fully implemented this year.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? So, Doctor, what's the role and responsibility of the Thunder Bay District Health Unit with regard to emergency management planning and their mandated responsibility here in
So so we so like the medical officer of health is like is often included in emergency plans. We do have an emergency preparedness program. It's largely directed out of our main office, primarily the public health inspector, the Health Protection Division, with the public health inspectors and our public health nurses and the infectious diseases program. We do so we're prepared to, you know, we're prepared to respond to emergencies wherever they occur in the district. And we do have an on-call system where we can receive if there is an issue, and that happens regardless of what a municipality, to be able to reach either myself or a public health inspector.
So is the Health Unit open to service delivery options? The reason local knowledge and contact along with local training, participation, and local exercise, if so, this would help with local work, though during emergency training, reaching out to Thunder Bay District Health instead of reaching out locally. We understand that right now the mandate is not to go local, but to go to Thunder Bay. This sometimes could create a problem.
So I where public health gets involved in emergencies, and I recently reviewed, worked with the city of Thunder Bay on their plan, and we've listed the functions or the roles that we would take on in a particular emergency. So I that was actually updated in the last month. I could certainly provide that to a municipality. The challenge, I think, is that the people that would be most likely needed in the in the event of an emergency would be public health inspectors or public health nurses with a certain level of expertise and competencies in those areas. So when you talk about food, water, potential issues, and any anything that's a health hazard, it would be a public health inspector. And we would expect to be able, we would be able to respond to it from the main office with potentially needing to connect with municipal partners, including any staff that we might have in that district office as needed to support the emergency response.
Would it not follow up would not be easier to have, for example, the local person attend some of these sessions so that that person is familiar with it and that could respond to the Thunder Bay head office?
So Carolyn, could you connect me with, or would you let me?
People who are on the safety, these people who have to choose to go to the full hour of access, people who are expected to come up and ask, is should they need to share some information with the person who's in the community? For example, if they have public health nurse, they might be disseminating some meetings or have them do some work other than have them share some strategy with them, then they would call upon the nurse. The nurse is not necessarily on call, but probably the community. The expertise comes first, and then if they are going to ask them to do something, they will have, then either the inspector or the mill or whoever is responsible will ask them to do some of that work. But they don't necessarily have the capacity to have all the knowledge of the people that are given the expertise or the authority or the ability to be able to be to or say that what we do under the community. But they do do sometimes become involved. They have, within the district, become involved with people with the expertise, meaning the whole community regarding the situation, but has heard of the past or too very well they are there. But, you know, certainly the other side of the people that are the priority, they have a home call right set up, but any member is available to everyone and the prescribed roles of public health and why they become involved are identified for anyone that's able to know that.
I'm sure you're aware that the nalatone is something of priority that everyone should have, and we have fire department here that is very vulnerable without it. Would the Thunder Bay District Health Unit provide training for our fire departments on the usage of that?
So we've worked with, yes, yes, we would. We we can, we have worked with other fire departments on that and providing naloxone. I'm not 100% sure of the detail, but it is part of the mandate under like that Expanded Harm Reduction Program funding that we received.
Thank you. Any other question? Again, thank you, Doctor DeMille, and thank you for taking your time and giving us a brief highlight of what your group is doing. We certainly appreciate the hard work that they are doing in the district. I know firsthand how occupied they are there, especially in the past year with the epidemic that we had, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for your support.
Move by Council Plummer, second by Council Yev, resolved at presentation provided by Doctor DeMille with Thunder Bay District Health Unit regarding public health and current issues, be accepted as received. And be further resolved that council thanks the above-notified representative for attending and providing an update to council. On favor? Item number 601, move by Council Donald, second by Council Rule, resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting held August 8, 2018 are adopted and circulated. Any questions or comments? On favor? 602, move by Council Plummer, second by Council Yev, resolved at the minutes of the special meeting held August 14, 2018, are adopted and circulated. Questions or comments? On favor? Item number 10, seven petitions, there's none. Number 801, dispersment. Move by Council Rule, second by Council Donald, resolved at dispersment sheet number 2018, Dax 13, $573,654.76, as provided to council for information purpose only. Questions or comments? On favor? Item number nine, move by Council Yev, second by Council Plummer, resolved at correspondence item 0901, 20903, be received and filed. Anything on that? I think I'd like to bring up 901 on the new business. So would be 1407. So would be fourteen oh seven.
If we don't bring it up, does it get brought, does the report just goes through as, as mentioned, or?
That's right, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And be further resolved that agenda item number oh nine oh one be returned to council under business for the meeting of September twelve, two thousand and eighteen. On favor? Opposed, none? Sorry, opposed? No, no. Carry, thank you. Item number ten, reporting committees, there's none. Item number eleven, verbal update on myself. So I would like to advise Council that Margaret and I will be attending the nuclear one oh one in Ottawa in October. This is part of the learning process on nuclear waste management. It's a seminar that's going on right now. There are people that are going in under the CLC umbrella. Margaret and I will be going in under a different budget for, uh, two nuclear waste, but a different portion of the budget. So, uh, did I know the last council? Anyone want to attend? Yeah, so is anyone else interested in attending? I know Councilor, Deavere is attending, through the CLC. Second item I have is I've been invited to meet with the new hemlock general manager, finally arrived on, on site. His name is Ian Butler. Some, a few highlights, he'd like to, he'd like to get a background, information on Man of Watch, and also our vision, the council's vision, but also the residents' vision on Man of Watch. And he'll also provide an update on the mindset itself and where he sees what's going on. So, uh, just to let you know that I, we'll be setting up a meeting with him very shortly. And if you have anything to provide to me as far as a little bit of background and some vision of what you'd like to see so that I can put something together to bring to him would be appreciated.
Mr. Chair, we have a resolution to approve the, to approve travel.
Could I ask for a mover and a seconder for the resolution regarding the travel to the nuclear one oh one?
So move by Council Plummer, second by Council Rule, resolve that the clean nuclear society nuclear one oh one course is scheduled to be held October tenth through eleventh, two thousand and eighteen at the Ottawa Marriott Hotel in Ottawa, Ontario. Be further resolved, conclusion of council's review, the following council and staff members will attend. Andy Major, yes, and Margaret Hartling, yes, anyone else?
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
Just, just for clarification, where would this money come from? Is, is the assumption that it's coming from MNDOL?
It, it is, it is. It's a different line of the NWD, therefore it has, it needs council approval.
Right, okay, so it's not coming from MRF?
No, it, it is NWD.
That's what I assume, I just wanted to be clear.
On favor? Opposed, none? Carry.
Yeah, so through the chair, if we can have a discussion on the October tenth meeting, that would leave the mayor and myself out of the office, out of the office and Councilor Deavere, so we will not have quorum that night. No, you will have quorum, you'll have three counselors, so does council wish to proceed with the council meeting or reschedule the October tenth meeting?
Yes, Councilor?
I suggest we reschedule.
Okay.
Could I?
Can we not just, can we not just move ahead with, with a basic agenda default?
Through the chair, we could, but we're getting to the point where we might possibly be lame ducks, so a basic agenda may not address all of the things that council may want to address in the next two council meetings. I can make the suggestion of possibly Monday, um, October eighth.
Wednesday, is it on? Or that's, you do that?
Oh, I just, I'm getting faces over there, that's Thanksgiving, I just, the faces are telling me that's Thanksgiving. They're not coming. And we'll be traveling Tuesday. Uh, so the fifteenth? Is that okay, boys?
I'll be, I'll be absent. I'll be absent.
Can we get back to you on that, because I don't have my scheduling with me and it's quite possible there may be an overlap.
So through the chair, we could propose the fifteenth, and if it turns out we don't have quorum, then we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Let, let's propose the fifteenth and then get back to it so that we know what is going on.
So if everybody could just send me an email and let me know your availability for that date, and then we'll prepare an agenda and notice to the public that the meeting date has been changed. You're not here either.
I'm not here either. Can I make a suggestion that we just go for the fifteenth date? If we can't get quorum, we just default to going ahead with the meeting on the tenth? As opposed to, I mean, we're not, we aren't going to have a lot of time to go back and forth with discussions, so it's your, it's our yes, yes, or no, we know, like just, you've got to move on, right? So I'm just saying if we can't get quorum for the fifteenth, then we default to just going ahead with the meeting on that.
Yeah, that's, that's true, for the fifteenth, and then we'll go forward.
Okay, so if everybody can email me their availability, please, as soon as you get a chance, and then I'll notify all of you as soon as I have a response from everyone.
It may be easier, Margaret, to have someone in your staff who may allow the council to respond.
I will do that.
So Dee can respond?
I will do that.
Thank you.
Good.
Through the chair, do I respond to the person who's emailing, or do I have to respond to you?
Same as before.
Same as before, please.
So my last item is something that I've been working on for a while, and you were just giving me a paper with an indigenous acknowledgement that I would like to be able to use at our every council meetings and every CLC meetings. This is something that I've been working on and I've been getting a lot of help trying to put together and acknowledge for our area. And I think that this is really the beginning of a symbolic recognition for our indigenous group, the two communities here on Man of Watch. So I'd like to read that to you. I want to acknowledge that we're meeting in Robinson Spirit, three D area, on land that had been traditionally used by several indigenous nations, but I would like to pay special recognition to our closest indigenous neighbors, the communities of Nukingon, Nishnep, and Pico with First Nations. I wish to recognize the long history of the First Nations and many people in our region, specifically, and show respect to them today. So this would be part of our agenda on, at the beginning of council meeting and also beginning of the CLC meeting. Would you approve? Any questions on this?
Is this really necessary?
Nothing is necessary, but if we hope to gain respect from our neighbors, I think that this is only a very small step towards a big step to come up in future.
Through the chair, I'm a firm believer in reciprocity. Does First Nations recognize the other communities and introducing them in their meetings that they have?
It is recognized that it is their land, not ours.
That's not exactly answering my question.
They don't have to.
Then why should we?
Now, first, Alvin?
Yeah. We're already, when we attend conferences in Thunder Bay with the league and No Munnet, any conference, Toronto, we are, they acknowledge the reserves that we meet on. So I don't see any problem in this, in just acknowledging it. And if it does help them, get them to come and just talk to us, but I think we could go a little bit further and, and learn more about, about the local native community.
And, and this is what we're striving to do, right, Council of the CLC. We will be bringing in people so that we learn and also our residents learn more about the indigenous people in our area. Councilors?
Thank you. And I, I have no problem with it. I have a minimum problem with the frequency. Do we need it every meeting? Once at the meeting in a month? How often do you recognize people before it becomes a mandate? You know, it's like saying tachy. After the fifteenth tachy, I don't want to hear it anymore. And I, I don't want to criminalize it. Once a month, in my opinion, at the beginning of the first meeting, make me suspicious. And that's just by that.
This would create a small difficulty where we would have to schedule when we meet them over and above, if we do whatever we're doing, then it's just part of the agenda.
Through the chair, this is not currently provided for in our procedural bylaw, and at this late stage of this council, we wouldn't change the procedural bylaw for just this. We would have a review of it with the new council. But we could pass a resolution, depending on what council's wishes are and how you want to do it in frequency, and the resolution could also read and that a provision be made in the next revision of the procedural bylaw.
Yes, Councilor?
Through the chair, does this conform to the actual way minutes are to, or agendas are to be stated during the council meetings, that there is an introduction like this before the council meetings actually are held?
As Margaret just explained, it's not part of our, of our bylaw right now, and just to change our old bylaw to something like this at this time really doesn't warrant it. We would leave that for the next council, for the resolution of council to address that with your mind.
Through the chair, can we not just have that set aside and let that decision be made by the incoming council? Since it's not going to come into effect until then anyways.
It would come into effect, still this council will say, it could come into effect. The reason why I'm bringing this up right now is because when a new council comes in, there's so many things that need to be done. This will probably be on the back burner for the next six months, so that means that for six, eight months again, we have something that is necessary, as far as I'm concerned, which is part of the reconsideration that the Canadian government suggested that we do as an entity. And delaying it to be something like this, that we shouldn't be doing any of this in conscience, I think it has to be done now. So, yes, Councilor?
So what do you need to move this forward?
We need a resolution for next.
Through the chair, you need a consensus of council. We can pass a resolution stating that council wishes to endorse that statement. You'd need to determine the frequency so we could write it in the resolution, and then we would put a provision in there that it would be included in the next revision of the procedural bylaw. I do believe that Mr. Mayor Major also wanted to make the recommendation to the CLC that they adopt it in the interim as well, because their terms of reference would also need to be amended.
But I think you got to be aware that because the CLC needs to be meeting council and want to make council aware that this, that they do get them, to present tools. So we've got to get it done.
Yes, if you want it to be effective next meeting. The next, yeah, effective the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I just wonder, while Jolene is writing that up, I'm okay with the whole thing, and I like, I like the idea, I support it, I just, and I don't mind the frequency of every meeting. I just don't know, and I respect that you took time to write this, I think just stating that we are meeting in their treaty is, is all that's necessary, and I'm not sure if we have to do all that wording, but I like the idea. I think just normally, as Counselor Reyes said, they normally just state they're meeting in this, in somebody's land, and we respect that, and then move on with their agenda, you know? And this seems a little, this seems a little wordy, that's all, as opposed to just stating we're meeting in their territory, their lands, that's all. But again, if it stays like that, it's fine, it was just not a good voice back, that's all.
It was suggested to me by people that I respect and the indigenous knowledge of, to order this way and to also make sure that our two First Nations, our closest to us, have special mention along with the meeting people, and this is why we've ordered it this way. We've been working on this now for quite a while, trying to get it. The people that matter, indigenous people, have to recognize that we're doing something for them and doing it for the right reasons.
Is the statement as presented standing? Thank you.
So move by Council Deavere, second by Council Rule, resolve that council wishes to acknowledge our indigenous neighbors at council meetings, effective at next council meeting. And be further resolved that this included in the secret bylaw, I'll go next review. On favor? Opposed, one? Carry. Okay? So the next item is verbal update by our CEO, Claire Frazier.
So through the chair, I just have a couple of updates for you. Demolition that has been budgeted for this year, we're hoping that the ten- We're hoping that the tenders will be issued by September 20th. Some of the main areas that we're going to be focusing on are going to be the abandoned trailers in the trailer court and clean that up. Some of them have been in quite a state of disrepair for a number of years now. Then we'll look forward to next year. The paving, Pioneer Construction has gotten the contract, and we anticipate they're going to start work around September 24th. Project will take about a week. So some of the marina areas are those that have been dug up due to water breaks and frozen water lines, you know, the great big breaks. And an area of station road near the Manitou Road intersection. It's going to be a couple of other small areas that they're going to look at when they get here and determine the scope for the work. Council also needs to be aware that the pa, the staffing, the staff is continuing to work on the patching with the equipment that we bought. But you need to be aware that Public Works continues, continues to struggle with staffing shortages. And water breaks are taking up a tremendous amount of their time. So the time left to do that pothole patching is not really there. So they're doing the best they can. Council's in receipt tonight of a memo from myself regarding the string of, of live council meetings. So, just so the public is aware, this will be the last council meeting that will be livestreamed until the new council is sworn in. We are new to this livestreaming, so we've taken our lead from a number of member municipalities much larger than us. So, there might be a perception that a, an incumbent council member may take an action and speak on a matter which could be perceived as campaigning. And that gives them an opportunity with municipal resources. So we're following the lead of other municipalities such as Thunder Bay. And this will be the last live council meeting until after, after the new council is sworn in. That will be the first one, is the swearing in ceremony for the new council. And if I could take a few minutes of council's time, the volunteer barbecue is going to be held on Monday. So can I just confirm who's available to assist with barbecuing? Sheldon? Thank you very much. So we'll see you about 4:30, because it starts at 5:00.
Ask this question?
Yes.
So is the proposal to spend the total amount on paving that was budgeted for this year?
Yes.
On that project?
Yes. As best we can, yeah. We'll get done what we can get done with that money.
So government, you have the amount?
Three, three hundred and twenty thousand?
So, item number thirteen, bylaws. Move by Councilor Dummer, second by Councilor Dunleavy. Be in the bylaw to appoint a life audit committee. We read the first and second. Speak on that, Margaret, please.
Through the Chair, under the Elections Act, we're required to appoint a audit committee. This is the same bylaw that we passed after the last election, and the member municipalities in the Northwest District will form the audit committee for each other. So those individuals are identified in the bylaw, and the terms and conditions are also identified and attached to the bylaw.
Questions? And for the more, the red third time passing number, the bylaw number 2018-18 on favor? Forward, none carried. Item number fourteen, under business, fourteen oh one. Move by Councilor Dunleavy, second by Councilor Rule, resolve that council is received for funds from Derek Desley, Office of the Minister of Transportation regarding empty delegation in place.
Through the Chair, council recalls, they had requested that we try to get a delegation with the Ministry of Transportation at AMO, and unfortunately, we were denied that delegation. We had also actually tried in the spring at Roma, and we didn't get a delegation there either. We're concerned about the winter maintenance on 6/14. And so what we're requesting council is that we contact the minister and ask for a meeting with him to discuss what the plans are for the maintenance of 6/14 for the upcoming winter season. We're trying to, what we would like to do is try to piggy this back with the NWOMO meeting, because we will be down south. And it would just mean modifying our flights and an additional night hotel, if we're able to secure that. If not, is council open to spending the funds for a meeting at another time? So, for discussion?
Question, comment? Yes, Councilor Rule?
I'm in favor of that.
I'm in favor of pigging back off the other conference you're going down to.
This is what we're going to try, but it did not happen.
Okay.
It would be a real saving.
So what you're asking then is, if that doesn't happen, you want permission to?
To have a meeting anyway.
Anyway, okay.
To contact the Ministry of Transportation and request a meeting re-winter road maintenance.
Just to further that, if you were successful to get a meeting, would it be possible to include an update on the Caramat?
It could be part of the, yes. Does not affect me.
There's in Caramat, all under the O- OFMC?
It, it does, but it is still under review of the transportation. The contract is given through the
By OFMC?
NFMC.
NFMC, sorry, yes.
But it's, it's still controlled by the direct department of transportation. And be a further result that on conclusion, council will review consideration, direct staff follows, to contact Ministry of Transportation and request a meeting regarding hybrid maintenance. On favor? Forward, none carried. Item number fourteen oh two. Move by Councilor, yes, second by Councilor Dunleavy, resolve that council is received administration report TR 2018-16 committed by Jolene Hill. This is deferred regarding taxi cab licenses. You can speak on that, please, Jolene.
Yes, thank you. Through the Chair, council received a letter from Mr. Brooks, owner of Gorts Taxi. And at the last council meeting of August 8th, council requested staff to prepare a report regarding the letter. Currently, taxi cab licensing is regulated by bylaw 8808 and 9301. Through the bylaw, or though the bylaw has been amended for taxi fare rates, it has not been changed since that time for cab, cab licensing. Other concerns addressed by Mr. Brooks are regulated in our taxi bylaws, as were presented in the report. In researching neighboring municipalities, our bylaw is similar in requirements for proof of insurance and certificates of medical fitness, and this is per vehicle. Every municipality in our district has a licensing fee with varying rates per municipality, and additionally, most require an additional fee through business licensing, something that we do not currently charge. After review, it is our recommendation that the fees be reviewed at the end of this year, when the schedule of fees for 2019 are reviewed.
And through the Chair, I can add to that. We do know that the bylaw does need to be updated, and we'll do that. Mr. Brooks came in early this week, and again, has further changes and requests. So this is now the third time he's come to the office asking for changes. We will review the bylaw, and we will update it. So that will come back to council. We're going to wait till the user fees are done, if council supports the resolution, and see if there's anything that we can do, or if it will have any impact on that bylaw before we bring it back to council.
I think just to back to that note, the, the letter we received, and I answered the Mr. Brooks matter, some of the, some of the staff reviewed that. But I also asked them, because there was some items in there that was part of the bylaw that he was not aware of, and he asked questions, also I asked him to leave the staff, and I think that it finally happened this week.
Yes, I think it was Monday or Tuesday he came in.
So that there was a confirmation given, and there was some answers provided and defined that he was not aware.
Some of the things he was asking for, we actually do do. But he never came in to ask, so he's now clear on some of those points.
Yes, Elmer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sir. In reviewing the user fees, I don't recall ever speaking to the actual annual licensing fee per vehicle. I've yet known, yes.
It's in the bylaw, correctly?
It's in the bylaw, but in the user fee.
Yes, yes.
Yeah?
So in order to change, in order to change the taxi fee, we would have to change the bylaw, not the user fees?
Not his fees charged aside. The fees the municipality charges him to license a vehicle, or a national?
Yes.
I, I don't recall it being okay.
No, that's, that's not in the fee, that's in the bylaw.
No, it's in the fees. I believe it's on page one.
It's in, it, it, through the Chair, it's, it's in both.
It's in both? So does the bylaw get changed every time? The user fee gets changed?
No, through the Chair, we haven't changed the the taxi cab licensing fee. We've only changed the rates, and those are not in the user fee bylaw.
And through the Chair, that's why we want to bring the user fees back before we look at the bylaw. Because that will dictate how we rewrite that bylaw.
Yes, Elmer?
Through the Chair, according to the bylaw that's been given to us, that's with regards to the old Municipal Act of 1980. The current one is 2001 right now, and there's definitely different references to different sections as compared to what's in here. So should we not at least revise the bylaw? And then bring the user fees in, or have them come in at the same time?
This is exactly what staff is having to accomplish.
No, through the Chair, Mr. Dunleavy wants to do it at the same time.
Change the bylaw at the same time?
Yes, staff is recommending we bring the user fees to council for approval when we normally do, which is, you know, before the end of the year. Then we take the user fees after council's had a discussion about what the user fee will be, and see whether that has any impact on the bylaw, and then update the bylaw at that time. Rather than updating a bylaw, discussing user fees, and then having to go back and amend a bylaw.
Can I ask a question about the just, when you're registering a third vehicle, it looks like you pay the full rate of the year. If you, if you register a third vehicle in November, what suggestion would be is that you pro-rate it based on two months that's left, rather than paying the whole fee. So if you're registering a third vehicle, three seventy-five, and then you only have two months left in the year, you have to pay that two, three seventy-five for two months, and then in January, if you still use that third vehicle, you have to pay it again.
Through the Chair, that's correct. There's no provision in the bylaw for prorating.
But it really, this is not what, what's happening, what you want to know is if they fight off a vehicle, or a vehicle gets off the road for a certain amount of time. Should be put in third vehicle, and the answer is, it is not by law, and I think there's only a charge of ten dollars as a temporary to replace the one D.
Through the Chair, that's correct, and, and it's two different, two different items, yes. If he wanted three vehicles on the road, then yes. There's no provision for, for prorating in our bylaw. Same as a lot of other things, trader's license, it's an annual fee, whether you do it January 1st, or you do it December 29th. It's an annual fee. But to your point about if he has a vehicle that's down for repairs, he can come in, as long as that vehicle is licensed and insured, then we will allow him to change a license for another vehicle. We have always done that. That's not new. But the question was never asked.
He was not aware, and he didn't know that.
Yes.
And be a further result that on conclusion, council will review consideration, direct staff as follows, review the fee for taxi cab licensing, when the schedule for 2009 fees are reviewed. On favor? Forward, none carried. Move by Councilor Rule, second by Councilor Dunleavy, resolve that council is in receipt administration report number TR 2018-17 committed by Margaret Hartling, CEO of Redrider, regarding local author representation. Speak on that, Margaret, please.
Through the Chair, this matter got delayed, just it sort of was misdirected to various people. It made the CLC meeting as an addition to the agenda at the last meeting. And through discussion, it's one of those funding bodies that the CLC makes a recommendation to council, and council approves the expenditure. So the CLC has approved this and is making a recommendation to council to support that recommendation and fund the speaker coming to do a presentation at the library. They, the dates that are in the original letters have been modified because of the delay in getting the approval from both the CLC and council.
Questions, or comment?
Through the, through the Chair, isn't this a bit time-consuming, having to go to the CLC, then to council, in order to approve that? Can the CLC just take care of their business or approving it anyways? So is there really a need to come to council?
At this time, there is a need, because that's what council requested.
Through the Chair, this is actually one of those funding pots of money that the CLC doesn't have the control over. They have their own money where they're, they can approve it and just ask us to cut a check for whatever. This is not one of them. This is one that council needs to approve, but it went to the CLC requesting funds. So in this instance, no, there's no shortcuts.
So you're okay with this? Yes. The further resolved, that from through the council review consideration, direct staff as follows. Full divination to the Mandroit Library in the amount of $1,100 to bring authors to the Mandroit. On favor, both not carried.
And through the chair, we'll notify the CLC tomorrow night that you have approved the recommendation.
Forty to four, moved by Council Dunleavy, seconded by Council Blummer. Resolved the council has received administration report FBA-2018-DAC-17, submitted by Owen Cranny, chief building individual regarding forty Mandroit Road East. Do you want that, Peter?
Thank you. As council's aware, we acquired the property at forty Mandroit Road East with hopes of converting the use of the building to Golden Age Club. We had an architectural review done of the building and a tender issued in June. We had one bid received that was over budget. We reached out to the potential bidders, and the problem that they stated why we didn't get more people bidding was the timelines. It was in the summertime, high season, and they couldn't read the timelines and some other reasons. So we lifted the timeline, hoping to complete the work by the end of the year, and that was due to the fact that we have a grant for fifty thousand towards the budget, and we have a timeline on our grant. So we went out again for pricing and giving them to the end of the year to get the project done. We received one more bid, and it was actually higher than the first bid I'd received. So I contacted the original bidder, asked for a commitment, they could finish the project within timelines of our funding and grant, uh, grant money. They've sent me an email committing to that. So presented some options to council, consideration for this evening, provide the additional funds to complete the project within this year. Another option would be to have the CAO contact the funding body, ask for an extension, and then provide more funds in the 2019 capital budget. This would involve repricing as well. We would not be able to hold the price we have today. So considerable time and effort in tendering and repricing and asking the same people to reprice the job. I don't think we could come out further ahead. So based on this, if council has the funds available, I would recommend to proceed at this time and get to work quickly.
Thank you. Questions? Senator Dunleavy?
Through the chair, where would these funds come from? Would they come from our capital expenditures or taxpayers are impacted, or would it come from the monies received from NWMO earlier this year?
I think that would be, I would prefer.
So through the chair, you have a couple of financing options because it hasn't been provided for in the 2018 budget, is you can take the money out of reserves, you can or use the community well-being fund. Neither one of those would have an impact on the residents directly. If you deferred it until 2019, in all likelihood, the recommendation would be that it come out of the revenue fund, which would mitigate other capital projects that managers might be considering to go forward.
Other questions? Senator Yer?
Through the chair, we got a report financial statement tonight saying that our reserves are healthy, so I suggest we could take it out of our reserves.
Senator Yer? I think that forty Mandroit Road is purchased with the idea of putting in the old main stuff in there so that they could dig in the building that is really falling apart around the years. So I think that we have to find the funds somewhere to be able to do this, and as Margaret stated, we have two things to do. I would certainly recommend that it would be a good way to spend some of the community well-being fund that is supplied to do it by the end of the year. I would certainly support that. Senator?
Through the chair, so would I. That's exactly what the funds were supposed to be used for in the first place.
Senator Yer?
Through the chair, those funds, well-being funds, I think could be used in a better, more efficient way that get matching dollars for it. That's my opinion on that. A three hundred thousand dollars could be turned to six hundred thousand dollars if we get the right grants.
Thank you very much. I agree with Council on the AM. We specifically stated that we would have to them and use most cheap many, using that provision is not cheap many. It does not mean anything else. So I, I don't like the idea of having to spend the money to be able, but if we're going to spend it, I think it's going to be reserved.
Through the chair, the community well-being fund is in a reserve fund right now either way, so it's money put away. So whether you leave the community well-being fund intact as a single number to piggyback or leverage for grants, that's fine. The resolution actually read, or special, or projects as approved by council, it wasn't just, so the option is available there. So whether you take it out of the well-being fund or whether you take it out of an infrastructure or another account out of reserves, it's still out of reserves, so it just makes the delineation a little different, that's all.
And in answer, council, through your comment, be used as seen money, any of our money can be used as seen money, whether it be reserved or community well-being fund. So really, personally, I think that it's a good project. We're doing it towards people that have been paying taxes here for a good part of their life, some of them, and we need to do that for them. As far as I'm concerned, that really was the end of the year.
Through the chair, so the only real issue here is just a timing issue to move ahead and get these funds moving to get the job done.
Sorry, there is, the timing is there, but where do we get the funds? Really what council has to do?
Well, we have agreed on that, just in the last segment there, that to get it out of the reserve funds or from NWMO, either way.
Council is deciding which. So where do we go?
I'm still saying take it out of reserve, through the chair. I'm for taking it out of the NWMO funds.
Reserves. So, Mr. Cranny, we have a guarantee from this person that they're going to be?
I asked for a written email that the work would be done within the grant time.
Mr. Cranny, honestly, soon as we're in there?
As this is signed off, we can, some of these requirements are to convert the building to what we call an A occupancy. As soon as we have that done, and we are in A occupancy, we could hand it level over to the group.
So you're looking at that, December, January?
Yes.
And be further resolved, that from through the council review consideration, direct staff as follows. On page one, provided there is no fund needed to complete the work before the end of the year, in the amount of thirty-three thousand two hundred dollars, and the funds will come to our reserve. On favor, both not carried.
So as a note to council, tomorrow, we will send notification to the Golden Age Club just to update them on the decision tonight and where we are in the project. Mr. Cranny, either me or you pick, one of us will do it.
I propose by the President, I'll let you see it at the final registration.
So you'll, so you'll take care of that.
I'm number five, moved by Council Dunleavy, seconded by Council Yer. Resolved that council has received administration report FBA-2018-DAC-17, submitted by Owen Cranny, airport manager regarding airport repaving study. Do you want that, Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Yer. This has been a carryover project from last year. The runway, we had a preliminary study done in 2008, and we haven't invested any money into the runway since that time. So what I'd like to do is get this engineering study done, so we can get an estimate of the costing, and at that time as well, prepare a tender document for the work, so we have this as a shelf-ready project. It's going to be substantial cost, we're going to need assistance with the project, but without this documentation and stuff in place, we can't start it. So this is the first step of looking at runway repaving and having a design worked out.
Questions? Comment?
So just to be clear, this is to help you get this shelf ready?
This is, this will be a shelf-ready project at the end. We will do geotechnical drilling with this money and prepare those documents to have as a tender document to go, with an estimation of costs, so that we know where we need to look for funding, but what amount of funding.
Through the chair, I agree with Mr. Cranny on getting a shelf-ready project, because if money comes around, sometime it comes around quick, and if you don't, if you have something ready on the shelf, you can access the funds better. So I agree with Mr. Cranny.
So same question as last time? Where's this going to come from?
Through the chair, Mr. Cranny and I had a conversation so that we wouldn't have to come back to council to see whether there was any way that he had room in his budget to absorb it in the operating. It's a little too much and the budgets are a little too tight, so we did review that and it's not a possibility. So we could again go to reserves to fund this. We do have an airport reserve, off the top of my head, I can't recall how much is in there, but if there's enough, we'll take it out of there, if not, we'll take it out of an infrastructure.
And this is actually?
It still needs to be funded.
Yeah.
May fifth, taken about thirty-nine thousand out of reserve ballpark. Is there any permission somewhere that may, um, the interim council to put the end thousand back in reserve?
Through the chair, you could, the resolution could read, and we have done that in the past, but it's generally the same council, right? You would have said last year that you're going to replace this in 2018. Yeah, it's, it's not best practice to bind a new council for the decisions that you're making and tie up their capital budgets.
And the new council may choose to know it.
No, not new council. Thank you.
And be further resolved, that from through the council review consideration, direct staff as follows. A run-in expenditure of 2018 capital amount, six thousand dollars in street project this year, and the funds will be provided for, for fund reserve. On favor, both not carried. Moved by Council Dunleavy, seconded by Council Yer. Resolved that council has received administration report FBA-2018-DAC-17, submitted by Owen Cranny, airport manager regarding airport repaving study. Do you want that, Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Yer. This has been a carryover project from last year. The runway, we had a preliminary study done in 2008, and we haven't invested any money into the runway since that time. So what I'd like to do is get this engineering study done, so we can get an estimate of the costing, and at that time as well, prepare a tender document for the work, so we have this as a shelf-ready project. It's going to be substantial cost, we're going to need assistance with the project, but without this documentation and stuff in place, we can't start it. So this is the first step of looking at runway repaving and having a design worked out.
Questions? Comment?
So just to be clear, this is to help you get this shelf ready?
This is, this will be a shelf-ready project at the end. We will do geotechnical drilling with this money and prepare those documents to have as a tender document to go, with an estimation of costs, so that we know where we need to look for, for funding, but what amount of funding.
Through the chair, I agree with Mr. Cranny on getting a shelf-ready project, because if money comes around, sometime it comes around quick, and if you don't, if you have something ready on the shelf, you can access the funds better. So I agree with Mr. Cranny.
So same question as last time? Where's this going to come from?
Through the chair, Mr. Cranny and I had a conversation so that we wouldn't have to come back to council to see whether there was any way that he had room in his budget to absorb it in the operating. It's a little too much and the budgets are a little too tight, so we did review that and it's not a possibility. So we could again go to reserves to fund this. We do have an airport reserve, off the top of my head, I can't recall how much is in there, but if there's enough, we'll take it out of there, if not, we'll take it out of an infrastructure.
And this is actually?
It still needs to be funded.
Yeah.
May fifth, taken about thirty-nine thousand out of reserve ballpark. Is there any permission somewhere that may, um, the interim council to put the end thousand back in reserve?
Through the chair, you could, the resolution could read, and we have done that in the past, but it's generally the same council, right? You would have said last year that you're going to replace this in 2018. Yeah, it's, it's not best practice to bind a new council for the decisions that you're making and tie up their capital budgets.
And the new council may choose to know it.
No, not new council. Thank you.
And be further resolved, that from through the council review consideration, direct staff as follows. A run-in expenditure of 2018 capital amount, six thousand dollars in street project this year, and the funds will be provided for, for fund reserve. On favor, both not carried. Moved by Council Dunleavy, seconded by Council Yer. Resolved that council has received administration report FBA-2018-DAC-17, submitted by Owen Cranny, airport manager regarding discretion, the ministry, natural resource, and forces. I really have nothing in writing on this, but as council is aware, county boundaries extend to twelve kilometers from the center of town. And I would assume that we had patrol over that area and we find out now that this land, even though it is ours, it is still patrol by the MRF. So really, we have words that said it's our land of the smart. We have the projects that are possibly coming up in the near future that may involve that area, and there may be one or more projects that we could be looking at. So what we need to know, and I would like to meet with the Minister of Natural Resources on this, to find out exactly what township needs to do prior to using its own land.
Through the chair, I acknowledge what you're asking and what you're saying, but ain't it an issue with land claims right now also on that?
Of course it is, but we must remember that it is a land claim only, as I'm including for...
For sure.
And also, does the land claim, is the land claim part of within the municipal act?
Okay, thank you. Through the chair, couldn't this discussion be conducted through teleconference, so that it would eliminate your travel and possibly have something set up right here and have the same questions brought forward to the minister?
Usually, when you meet with a minister, it involves several other people, and I find that face-to-face contact is probably a lot better and more serious by doing this. Teleconference is exactly that, if you don't know who you're talking to.
Well, you could have a screen set up. Perhaps it's not here with that kind of setup, but the hospital provides teleconferencing for patients. So, if the number of members or associates with the minister are present at the table, you will still get a visual of who you're talking to. It's to help save a bit of money as well.
So, my thoughts would be is that I hope, I hear you saying you're hoping you're trying to do this all in one meeting in one day, which you're already arranging. So, I think the idea is good. If you're already arranging a meeting, then why not another one if you can't? The question is whether you arrange another meeting and another trip is what the concern is, right? That's what I'm feeling? Yeah. So, I think you have the green light, I would think, to arrange another meeting in the same day if it can happen, on the same trip, but I'm not sure if you're getting the green light for a second trip or a different...
Well, just so that you're aware, by meeting with the minister and getting some guidelines, it could mean a lot for the ministry. It could mean that the ministry will end up with projects within, within years that are worth a lot of money. We're spending a few dollars per trip, as far as I'm concerned, we certainly keep money while standing, but if we try and combine everything together, but for a few thousand dollars, we could benefit to millions, and not only for something that we may have in prior how, but also in future, so that we know exactly what our boundaries mean, so that we are even future council, if you want to look at different projects, they know what the guidelines are at this point. Right now, we have that.
Making the request, you have time to send prior documentation to the ministry's office, like what we're asking them, so they can prepare and look at what we're asking them, because I've been to a few of these meetings that we'll get back to you, you never get an answer.
And that happens?
Of course.
Through the chair, the alternative is if we're unable to secure a meeting at the same time that we're gone, and if council is concerned about a second trip, we're gonna be getting requests for Roma very shortly, because Roma's the second week in January or something. You know, it's going to be this council that's gonna be making those, those delegation requests, see the way, because the new council won't be sworn in until December. I don't know if it's anymore pleasing to council. No, it would not. But it wouldn't be this council that's carrying the project forward either.
Through the chair, if you were able to secure a meeting with the minister while you're attending your conference, that'd be great, you're actually getting two-for-one deals, if it is possible. But if not, as our Madam CEO stated, let's wait for the Noma conference.
Not Noma, Roma.
Roma, pardon me.
Or just wait a week, wait a bit of your calendar?
Exactly. I think we gotta, through the chair, I think we gotta try, it's a dear, it's a valid concern, it's a valid question, but I'm not sure if I would agree to two separate trips. If we can get it all together, I'm for that, even if you guys spend an extra night in Toronto or whatever, that warranted, you know? Should be able to get it. Explain, if we explain to the ministers, we're coming from the north, they'll accommodate us, I'm pretty sure. Worth a try.
If we send the presentation to the minister and we don't get that date for the meeting, would it include it to take back it?
Take back what?
The presentation?
You wouldn't, through the chair, you wouldn't even send a presentation until you have a meeting? The letter would outline what you want to discuss with him, and then if you're granted the meeting, you would then forward the information. Even delegations is just, you know, a 50-page verbiage to say why you want the meeting, and then you present the materials if you're a board of delegation. I have another suggestion for council. Don't shoot me, Mr. Cranny, but if we are granted this, Mr. Cranny is very involved in some of those projects, and they are zoning and planning related, if he's available, if council would consider approve, including Mr. Cranny in that meeting. He's not coming to work tomorrow.
I would certainly appreciate his help.
If he's available. I just want it in the resolution, so that if you are available and we get it. It would depend, it would be the week of the 10, if we're granted.
So, what is Councilor wish? Have we tried to get a meeting for same day?
Yes, correct.
You could even just say to coincide with the district having plans.
Further, all the council review consideration, which has followed, requested meeting with the Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry, before his following request, he's dissing government. On favor, both not carried. So, letter number seven, I've brought forward on myself, and it's the letter that our Minister, Michael Mather sent to us, you're all aware of it, and the controversy that's been happening around the coffee and the stuff that other people in legislature have been speaking about, and he's asking for council to approve to do a... A petition on I wear my coffee with pride and respect, and I'm asking for, how do we proceed with that? Should we, is there a place where we could put that sort of the national name, and maybe Margaret would have some ideas on that?
I'd have to see if there's still space at the front counter downstairs with the new, with the new setup. I'm not sure, is there a ledge anywhere there? We could probably provide a space.
Does council have any agreement that we go ahead with this?
Thank you, Mr.. I appreciate that our MPP is trying to do, and it's very true. But I'm surprised you say this, Council. To me, a petition is a matter of personal preference. Is Councilor to throw that out? I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's appropriate.
Any other comments, your members?
I don't have a problem putting it out there. If people want to sign it, they sign it, if they don't want to sign it, they don't sign it. Through the chair, there would be some kind of notice, maybe to our public through our website or through the pink slips that we get, community events, stating that that petition will be up there for a certain period of time. Just to get the message out to everybody.
Move by Councilor Donald, second by Councilor Yeh, with all the council and the chief of ministry in support of Michael Mather, MPP man, as well as Matt Duhon, regarding, in bracket, I wear my coffee with pride and respect petition. In the further result, I have long concluded council review consideration, which has followed, supported petition by Michael Mather regarding I wear my coffee with pride and respect. On favor, both not carried. Thank you.
So, through the chair, just before we go into closed session, the time is now 20 to 10, so the expectation is that we will run past 11 o'clock, and our procedural bylaw provides that a resolution must be passed to extend the meeting past 11:00. So, if council wouldn't mind signing it now, so that we can just proceed, then it needs, otherwise, the meeting is adjourned automatically at 11:00, and then it needs to be passed every hour after that, should we still be here, and it needs to be unanimous. So, if anyone disagrees with that, then they should state their opinion now. If everyone's okay, we'll pass this around for a move in the secondary and approve it, and then we'll bring it up again at 12:00. So, for those that are watching this meeting via YouTube, because we expect to be in camera for quite some time, we're going to turn off the YouTube stream right now, so that there's not a large vacuum of time with nothing going on. We will resume the video when we return from open session. So, when you go to look for it online, there will be two separate videos.
A move by Councilor Donald, second by Councilor Yeh, with all the council approved the standing meeting past 11:00 PM. On favor, both not carried. So, move by Councilor Plumber, second by Councilor Yeh, where Section 239 bracket four of Municipal Act 2001, SO 2001, C25, provides that before holding a meeting or part of a meeting, that is to be closed to the public, the municipality or local board or committee of either of them shall see by resolution the fact of holding a closed meeting and the general nature of the matter to be considered at the closed meeting. Now, therefore, be resolved that this meeting is hereby sold to the public as the subject of matter being discussed, called under the following section. Item 1, Section 239, in bracket 2, bracket I, a trade secret or a scientific, technical, commercial, financial, or labor relation information supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board, which is disclosed, which if disclosed, could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiation of a person, group, a person or organization. Northern broadband, item number 2, Section 239, bracket 2, bracket E, delegation or potential delegation, including matters before administrative tribunal affecting the municipality or local board, delegation update, stand forth. Item number 3, Section 239, in bracket 2, E, delegation or potential delegation, including matters before administrative tribunal affecting the municipality or local board, conflict event test, complaint update. On favor, both not carried. Now, with the new one.